Please remain standing as I ask for a moment of silence for former Alderman, city clerk, city treasurer, and volunteer fireman Russell Chiki Russo. May he rest in peace.
Thank you.
Vote.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderwoman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Pro rro minutes?
Nothing this evening.
Correspondence?
We have a letter this evening. Dear Council President Rodriguez, the purpose of this letter is to express my extreme dissatisfaction with the dispatchers and taxi drivers of Syndicate and Robbins Taxi in Middletown and for me to exercise my right of freedom of choice. When I lived in my apartment in Middletown a few years ago, I called the dispatcher for Syndicate for a cab to take me to a doctor's appointment about 25 minutes before my appointment time, and she said it will be about five minutes. In essence, she refused to send me a taxi at all. Therefore, I called Robbins Taxi, and they simply said, no, they will not send me a cab. That day, I missed my doctor's PCP appointment. They sit, came to the head, when, the situation came to a head when Syndicate took me to Best Buy and refused to pick me up, so I called my cousin Tony, who I don't depend on anymore for transportation. Also, the drivers of Syndicate would charge me enormous outrageous fees just to take me places around Middletown. I live on Social Security retirement. Once a Syndicate driver took me to three places, then he drove me to town, to the town of Walk Hill and told me to give him $80 or get out. One Syndicate driver who I mistakenly thought was honorable and had integrity is Mike. His phone number is, I won't read that. He took me to Montrose VA a couple of times in 2022, and he told me if I ever needed a ride to multiple places, call him, which I did for transportation to four places on Friday, September 20th. The first stop was the post office where I just grabbed mail and packages and put them in my new zipped shopping bags I just received. While I was at Walmart, which was just before my last stop with him, someone opened the trunk and took out my zipped up bags at that time containing letters from me from John Hancock regarding my life insurance policy. In addition, they also took a return to sender letter that I mailed to Paul Sangali and a letter from a government agency. I don't remember the agency's name. I also don't remember if there were other letters. Also, the white female dispatcher for Syndicate is disgusting, unprofessional, and a disgrace to the dispatch profession. Furthermore, Robbins Taxi refused to pick me up and take me anywhere on numerous occasions.
All right. Forward to the police chief, and we'll do an investigation, look into it. Anything else?
That is it for this evening.
Right. Mayor have the special presentation tonight?
Yes, good evening, everyone. As you know, we've been doing several ribbon cuttings, and so a little while back, we started engaging in recognizing some of our long-term businesses in the city, some that were retiring like Tony Baffa's after, you know, several years in the city, Maria Bruno, Fusion Barber Shop. And so we wanted to hold the, wait for the, probably the biggest one, at least that I'm aware of, until the actual date of their anniversary, and that would be Serpentine Jewelers. Just a little history on Serpentine Jewelers. First, if you've been around Middletown for a long time, you have to know Leon and Mary Serpentine, two of the greatest people you'll ever meet. I had the pleasure of meeting them when I ran for Alderman as a member of the common council. I think I knew him before that, but really started to engage with Leon as part of the downtown business community. But a little bit of history on Serpentine Jewelers. On October 16th, 1949, Leon and Mary Serpentine opened their store. They started out as LC Serpentine Jewelers located at 7th South Street. Leon was a member of the 82nd Airborne Division of the US Army. In World War II, he started his career doing instrument repair. After the war ended through the GI Bill of Rights, Leon attended A.W. Thacker in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, specializing in watch repair and hand engraving. On the day of the opening in 1949, there were 13 jewelry stores in downtown Middletown, believe it or not, and it was predicted that Leon would be out of business in six months. The little store on South Street soon became too small for someone with big ideas and aspirations for his family. From 1950 to 1963, the jewelry store gradually grew as it moved from location to location. The first move was to 105 North Street, where Leon custom-built every showcase to show his treasures. Move two was to the corner of West Main and James Street, a building that was torn down during urban renewal in the city of Middletown. At that time, the current police station was the home of the post office. Because the building was slated to be torn down, the store was moved to 8 North Street, and the last move was across the street at 23 North Street in 1963, when Leon purchased the former County National Bank building, again remodeling the entire store and building all the showcases and wall cases himself. Prior to 63, Serpentine Jewelers also opened in Warwick, where his family of five lived from 1962 to 1970, at which time the family moved back to Middletown. In 1971 proved to be a pivotal year, as Serpentine Jewelers opened their third location at the newly constructed Orange Plaza Mall, the first enclosed mall in Orange County, while also keeping his commitment to downtown Middletown. At the time, Sears was about to mainstay in the city, and the store was also closed and moved to Orange Plaza. One of the dreams of Leon was to have his entire family working in the business, something that helped the business grow and prosper. During the 1980s and 1990s, besides Leona Mary and her husband Ware, Linda and her husband Ware, Richard and his wife Donna, and Anita all worked in the stores. In the 1980s, the gift collection was opened in the newly constructed lower level of the Orange Plaza and was run by Linda and Anita until the mall management forced a closing of the store in the late 80s. Up until his death in 1989, Leon was an important figure in downtown Middletown, served in the Alex Club, the Lyons Club, the director of the Central Business District, which preceded the Bid District in the 60s, and as a founding member of the Downtown Middletown Business Improvement Coalition, a forerunner of the Bid, which is a vital part of the downtown business community today. After passing in 1989, Leon's passing in 1989, the business was run by family members with Richard becoming the president. In 1992, with the opening of the Galleria at Crystal Run, decision was made to close the Orange Plaza store and move to the new mall where the store operated until 2002. The North Street store continued to operate for a short period after the Galleria opening, but the handwriting was on the wall when the store closed and was no longer practical to keep that second location. 2001, Mary and the second generation continued operating the business. 2002 was the end of the 10-year lease at the Galleria, and decision was made to close that store. At that time, Richard and Donna made the decision to return to downtown with a smaller version of the jewelry store and continue the family business, now called Serpentine Jewelry and Watch Services, located at 44 West Main Street, ironically across the street from Leon's third location. After the passing of Donna in 2018, Richard is continuing the tradition started by Leon and Mary in 1949, in the original mission statement of offering fine jewelry, custom-crafted jewelry, expert jewelry and watch repairs while adhering to the principles of quality of product, ethical business practices, superior product knowledge, and unexcelled customer service. So for all those reasons, and I know it's a little bit long on the biography of the Serpentine Jewelers, but we in the city wanted to recognize the 75 years of service not only to the city of Middletown, but the greater Middletown community, and ask Richard if he could come up on behalf of the Serpentine family. And Richard, on behalf of the city of Middletown, common council, myself, we'd like to present you with this plaque for congratulations for 75 years of service and dedication to the city of Middletown community, and say thank you very much.
I'd like to thank the mayor, who I know as Joe. Maria Bruni for putting this all together, Miguel Rodriguez who initiated the whole thing, and all the members of the common council for acknowledging my family's achievements. As a child, I would watch my father repair watches and jewelry. After years of watching my father's hands perform intricate work, I got to the point where I would know how those hands were going to move and what would come next. Finally, he would let me try to do what I had been endlessly observing, and it was as if I had done it before, because my father's hands had become my hands. I was fortunate to have had the opportunity to learn a trade at a very young age and then have a lifetime to master those skills. But even more important than the physical skills were the life lessons my parents endlessly taught, with the most important being work ethics and the importance of your character. For their foresight and perseverance in guiding me through life, I say thank you, Leon and Mary Serpentine, my mom and dad, for the opportunities that you have allowed me to have, and I am proud to say that I have carried on your tradition and legacy to this 75th anniversary. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Richard, we also like to present to Leon and Mary possibly the key to the city of Middletown, and say thank you to them, and I'm sure they're watching. Thank you so much.
All right. This time, I'm going to go to public hearings and grievances.
We have the, I'm sorry, we have the open public hearing for the Orange Terrace subdivision held open from the October 1st, 2024 meeting.
Okay, at this time still open, anyone from the public would like to address the council? Number 15.
You're right. Fifteenth time I'm up here because of this project. We just don't have to bill the folks for. You know, it's getting, this thing is two and a half years old. You folks got to do something. We can't go on like this, you know? When, when do you plan on voting on this thing? I thought it was going to be tonight, but apparently it's not. It's going to be more meetings? Do we have any idea when this is going to come to a vote?
So we're going to close the public hearing tonight, open it for comments for two weeks, and we're asking our corporation counsel to come up with a, with a recommendation, our city corporation counsel. We just received today more information from the applicant engineer, and we're asking our commissioner and our corporation counsel to review it.
I think, I'm sure you heard all my comments that I made previously.
We have everything.
Keep it in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any members from the council have any questions? Answer. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Alderman Massey, do I have a second? Alderman Jean Francois, all in favor?
Aye.
The hearing's closed. It was still open for two weeks for more comments, and forward to the commissioner and our corporation counsel. All right. For the good of the city, anyone would like to address the council, please step forward, please state your name. You have three minutes.
All right. Good evening. Good evening, council. My name is Jason Nichman, and I live in Middletown. And for the fifth consecutive meeting, community members have gathered here to urge you to pass a ceasefire resolution. I would like to commemorate Jerry Kleiner for mentioning Israel's decision to detonate thousands of pagers in Lebanon, which resulted in the deaths of two children and at least 40 other individuals. As Kleiner suggested, this would be considered an act of state terrorism if it was done on the other side. In the past year, Israel has dropped the equivalent of over five atomic Hiroshima bombs on Gaza, a region that has the same land area as Las Vegas, but three times that the population of Vegas. So the toll is staggering. We've had more children killed in Gaza in the past year than globally in the past five years. And so with each passing meeting, the situation worsens, so we need a council member to champion this resolution, not just, you know, on behalf of the thousands of Palestinians and Israeli hostages who have been indiscriminately bombed by Israel. There are four demands in the ceasefire resolution that calls on our federal and state elected officials to, one, implement an immediate ceasefire, permanent ceasefire, two, support humanitarian aid, three is an arms embargo and redirecting those tax dollars that are going to their military into our own community, our housing, our education, our health care. That's where our tax dollars should go, not funding a genocide. And four is condemning Israel's indiscriminate killing and collective punishment, as well as all forms of Islamophobia, xenophobia, anti-Arab, anti-Palestinian racism, and antisemitism. So as you could see, there's nothing within these four demands that's scary or extreme or hidden, and we're certainly not alone. Our neighboring cities have already taken a stance, and at this point, 70, over 70% of Democrats support an arms embargo and a ceasefire. Even Biden's administration announced today that they will place an arms embargo on Israel if they don't stop the escalation in the next 30 days. So let's not let Middletown continue to fall behind. We should write a chapter in our city's history that reflects compassion and courage, not silence in the face of adversity. I will be following up with all of you by email to collaborate on this and answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Camilla. I'm a Middletown resident. I also support the resolution for the ceasefire. And tonight I wanted to actually read from someone who is a Palestinian in Gaza. She says, hello, I'm Ola, a graduate student from the Faculty of Science Al Azar University in Gaza, Palestine. I truly appreciate you taking a moment to read my story. As you're reading my message, myself and my family, my mother, father, three sisters, and my little brother are fighting death in northern Gaza and trying to survive under all kinds of suffering, including but not limited to destruction, fear, and instability, starvation, thirst, and poverty. For eight months until now, we have been struggling to get proper food after prices increased by 15 to 20 times, struggling to have clean water for use and drinking. We lacked security and stability as we were forced to evacuate our house and left everything behind. Then we had to move at least three times since new, every new area we seek refuge to gets bombed. Before October 7th, my days were filled with attending lectures, working, and volunteering. I completed my bachelor's degree in mathematics with a GPA of 96.01%, with a grade of distinction with first-class honors. Once I completed my graduate studies, I began looking for a job to cover the study expenses. I got my first contract as a mathematics teacher on August 30th, 2023, at a school here in Gaza. I was very excited, happy, and full of passion for this new chapter in my life as a student and teacher at the same time. It was one month like a beautiful dream in which I began my work as a teacher to my students in the seventh grade. I was explaining mathematics using extracurricular activities. However, since October 7th, my life turned upside down. Darkness prevailed, all hopes and dreams quickly vanished. Our once peaceful neighborhood has been devastated by relentless bombings, leaving my home university and my workplace destroyed. Although there is nothing here but rubble and ash color and a dark and gloomy future looms ahead, my family and I fight every day, holding on to a thin thread of hope that tomorrow might be better. It is our taxpayer money that is helping to fund the bombs that are destroying Ola's home. It is our government that is aiding Israel in limiting and preventing humanitarian aid from sending food and water and support to her family. And I think we should do whatever we can to help that not be the case, which can start by passing the ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. I'm Steve Swift from Bloomberg. Well, I've been in sales for 47 years, so over that time, I learned that if you want to sell to someone, first you have to understand where they're coming from. So I'm thinking probably, I thought about the council members, most of you, like, like me, prior to, you know, a couple of years ago, getting your news from CNN, PBS, NBC, ABC, the usual networks. I wanted to just mention that tonight, you'll hear us testify, and we'll say this is happening and that's happening, and you're not seeing any of this stuff on CNN and PBS. There are two networks. I hope you'll just take a minute or two to just watch sometime, and then you can understand where we're coming from, because you're going to see stuff there that you'll never see on PBS. I made a visual, because I'm a kind of visual kind of person, but it's Democracy Now! and Al Jazeera. Al Jazeera, that sounds like bad, right? But it's funded primarily by Qatar. They have an English version, but you're going to see things on there that you're not going to see on the other media. That's all, just keep an open mind. That's all I'm asking. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Come on up.
My name is Alejandro. I'm a member of the community. A year has gone by, and I ask myself, how is it possible that we, the people, are still begging for a ceasefire to be signed by our local and federal governments? Though the donations of Israel interest groups to local and federal civil servants governors is a potential answer, I give the benefit of the doubt that people couldn't possibly be that evil as to witness a highly...
Point of order, point of order. If you want to make a point, that's fine, but don't start insulting us. You saying we're evil?
I didn't say you're evil. I didn't say you're evil. I said, I said through the donations of the Israeli interest groups, that local and federal civil servants, anyone that's taking money from, I don't know who's taking money, I'm just saying in general, who is taking money from the Israeli lobby groups, it's one of two things. It's either evil, or it's an ignorant situation that you just don't, you or anybody doesn't understand. I'm generalizing, I'm not pointing the finger, sir. So I write... So I write, so if, so if financial incentives are not at play, the only possible explanation we have to dealing, that we have in dealing with is ignorance, which I'd like to believe that the ignorance is possibly more than likely the scenario, as this country has invested in defense rather than on education for the past 80 years, since the end of the Second World War. We have over 800 bases globally. The United States accounts for nearly 40% of the global military spending and devotes a large share of its GDP to defense than most other countries. The US military spending was greater than the next 10 biggest spenders in 2023. There's no need for this. We need to focus on our people at home. And speaking of education, allow me to give you an ounce of education. This is not America where we stand. The US of A is a nation without a proper name. The United States of America is not a proper name. United is an adjective, a determinant of the noun states. It determines that the states are united, okay? Off is a preposition, denoting location, position, and bearing. The states are in America, the continent from Argentina to Canada, okay? You go anywhere in this hemisphere, this continent, and the vast majority of people will agree with this. We took the name of this continent to have an identity because United Statesians just doesn't sound right. And it's not right, because we actually don't have a name. And how ironic that we, that we took the name of the First Nations peoples, the land, and as well as the names of the indentured servants and slaves which we used to build this hegemonic empire, and we don't have a proper name. Bastards we are. This is Turtle Island, as our First Nation peoples refer to it. Let us never forget that on this day that passed... That's my three minutes?
Yep.
Listen, you have a moral compass that we have to move forward with. I don't have that power as you do. We need to figure, as our former speaker said, we need to figure a way to have a ceasefire. We need to, we need to stop funding nations that are hemorrhaging our potential to be seen in the world as good people.
All right. Moving on. Remarks of mayor. All right. Remarks of department heads. Economic development, we're done with public comments. It did, I did. We moved on to the agenda.
Good evening, everyone. Today, we had a couple meetings, our Community Development Agency and our Industrial Development Agency. At those meetings, we prepared our 25 budget and are projected up to 28, which this evening we had the CDA and today the IDA, so that was completed. A few things that are coming up this week. We have at the, this Friday, celebrating Meatloaf at the Paramount Theater. This is going to be a spectacular show because it's featuring American Idol winner Caleb Johnson. So this is going to be an awesome show. Tickets are still available, MiddletownParamount.com or Ticketmaster. Also, on Saturday, we have, it's our final farm market, and we're going to be doing downtown pumpkin patch, pumpkin giveaways, starting at 9:00 AM. We're going to have some pumpkin painting. And I'd like to thank the Run for Downtown organization. They're donating all the pumpkins. We have a DJ. And just come by and check it out, and also come say thank you and bye to the farmers. We're looking forward to a great season next year as well. We're still looking for our tree, guys, you know? We thank you to the folks that have reached out to us. We have certain specs. It has to be at least 40 feet high, easy access, and also close to the city proximity. So we still have a little bit of time, but contact the Business Improvement District Office. You could email us, we're on social media. Also, you could contact here City Hall if anybody knows of a great tree that's, they're willing to donate, so we can adorn it, adore it at Degnan Square for our tree lighting ceremony. And I just want to congratulate Richard Serpentine and Serpentines. Thank you and congratulations, and thank you for still being part of our downtown community. And that's all I have.
Question for Maria? Thank you, Maria. Police chief.
Good evening. Do you have a special guest I would like to introduce in a moment? First, just an item of business, as a reminder, as we enter into the Halloween season, the end of the month, and it's, we don't have another meeting prior to such, that there is a curfew, it's a citywide curfew effective October 29th through November 1st, and that's for all persons 18 years and younger, not to be out without purpose into the community. First offense is a warning, taking them home. Second offense could lead to an appearance ticket. So just as a reminder to our community that we do put these regulations into effect to help keep the city safe during a time that is typically known for mischief. Other than that, I have nothing, unless you have questions for me, other than to introduce someone this evening.
Any question for the police chief? Go ahead, chief.
Yep. 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM, October 29th through November 1st. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Oh, good.
Oh, good.
Stevenson. So before you this evening, many of you know Stevenson Montrari as a member of the community, very involved. He's been involved in numerous service organizations. His family is deeply involved and rooted in the community. He resides in the community. His wife works in the school district. As a reminder, his son was a national champion wrestling. He had him here several months ago. I've known Stevenson for probably seven or eight years now through different organizations that we've partnered with and worked with collaboratively in various roles. And I actually reached out to Stevenson earlier this year, back in the spring, to ask him a question in regards to the service industry. At the time, he was working for Catholic charities. When I first met him, he was working for Honor. And my question was, I was looking to hire a service coordinator for the police department. I explained what I was looking for to Stevenson. He listened to me attentively, and a few hours later, he called me back and told me that he found the perfect fit for my position, and it was him. I honestly couldn't be happier, knowing Stevenson for the many years of working hand-in-hand with him, seeing his commitment to his community, commitment to his profession. I knew it was a perfect fit. My search ended right then and there. And today, I'm happy to introduce Stevenson as a member of the Middletown Police Department as a service coordinator. And what does that mean? Stevenson, with his knowledge, his background, he has an insight to all the different services that are out there and are afforded to the members of the community. Oftentimes, when people need services, they're hit with obstacles, whether it's time of day, they don't meet the criteria, there's red tape to go through, so on and so forth. So bringing him in and onboard with us, he's able to navigate through that, and he becomes the conduit to, from the person to the actual service. He's been with us since July, the beginning of July, and he's been nothing but a blessing to our organization, to the community. He's fit in very well with our department. They've trusted him quickly. They take him out on the road. He has a flexible schedule. He's not bound by bookends of times of day or days of week. He is willing to work whatever hours and times that are needed to meet the needs of the community. So I can't thank him enough for joining our team, and I'm so happy and blessed to have him on our team. So, thank you. And I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank Senator Scoofus, because he is the person that is responsible for funding Stevenson's position. So I greatly appreciate his commitment to this and his continued funding, hopefully to keep Stevenson with us. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Good evening, all. The reservoirs are lowering messy, 80%. So we've been having very dry season, a very dry couple of months. So we're mobilizing to try to pump from supplemental water sources. I did send you an email about this situation. Just a reminder to the public about leaves pickup. Please do not deposit any leaves in the streets, because they are hazardous. We will start picking them up on November 4th. So if you have done anything, please put it back on your property and just keep our streets safe, safe until we start going and picking them up. If you really have to dispose of them, you can put them in bi-degradable bags, or you can put them in a container, we can still come and pick them up. Just do not throw them on the street. It's hazardous and it puts liability on you if anything is to happen. You know, even, even when the leaves, when it's time to put the leaves on the street, keep them away from the intersection, keep them within three foot from the, from the curb, and, you know, not huge piles in there, because some kids, they go play, believe it or not, within the leave piles by the time we get to them. So just consider all these things. So another update is the traffic operation is moving very well. We were shooting to finish it this year, end of this year, but the weather is going to be rushing us, so it's going to, it's going to get into next year by the spring, hopefully early spring. Spring next year will be done with it. It's a very successful project, as we hear from everybody around us. High Barney Tank, like I told you last, last Common Council meeting, is now online, a very successful project, and we expect High Barney Tank and Mountain Avenue Tank to last for hopefully 100 years to come. Before you tonight, a couple of resolutions about adjusting parking regulations on De Boys and Earl. Again, this thing happened because one resident requesting something, requested something from the Common Council to adjust it, to adjust the parking regulations. We went there, the Chief of Police and myself, we measured it, and we found out that there's really hazardous condition there if we allow parking on both sides of the streets. We went down to Earl, and we went down to subsequent streets, and we found that it is, it is a concern to allow parking on both sides of the streets. The mayor has been asking for, you know, a couple, a few years about the need to have an overall parking regulation evaluation throughout the city, because all these, whatever has been around in there, it's time for us to take a fresh look at it. And I support that, and I'll be, I think we already have requests before the Board of Estimate to have a study done by a consultant rather than us, because honestly, we don't have any time to do any, any of that stuff. Consultant will come in, make a recommendation to the mayor and to the Common Council, and how to adjust parking, what street, what hours, you know, we have, we have, we have, I mean, cars, they can be parked in there for indefinite, indefinite time, indefinite amount of time without the sweeper having ability to go in there and clean under them. So it's going to be some restrictions, you know, two hours every other day, alternate street, just like any other community, which we don't have at this time. So I think that is very much needed, what the mayor has been asking for, and I'm behind it 100%, and we're ready to take it on once the Board of Estimate approves us to go for RFQs from consulting engineers. The courts, the bid opening for the courts, which is basically moving the court from here, from City Hall to federal, formal federal courthouse, and establishing two courthouse, court, two courts within that one building, the formal federal courthouse. The bids, they were opened on October 10th. Total bid's around $5 million, which, within the budget for the project. And again, Senator Scoofus was very instrumental of giving us about, I believe, $2.5 million. The mayor has all the numbers, because he's hands-on with that. $3 million, $3 million from Senator Scoofus, very much appreciated, which means the city will put up only $2 million, which is a great success. This project at some point was going to be $15 million and so on and so forth. And a lot of argument happened with the, with the court administration until we got to this level. So hopefully, we'll be able to move with this project very immediately, to get it constructed, get the court moved, and everybody will be happy. Any questions for me?
Any question for Jacob? Aldman Tobin?
I was just wondering if you knew anything about what's going on in Town of Walkill as, on East Main Street going out of the city? Because we've got a couple complaints, and I have to explain to people. That's Town of Walkill, it's not the city of Middletown. They've, the roads have looked like they've been dug up and hatched a little bit. Do you have any idea what they're doing?
That's probably the gas, the gas line in there that was installed.
The gas line?
Yeah, probably a gas line, right in front of the school.
Yeah, all the way down.
Yeah, yeah. That's a gas main that was done. I don't know what their regulations are in the Town of Walkill.
So we complain all the time to the Town of Walkill, and they say it's a county road, and the ambulances going down.
It is a county road.
Very bumpy. I don't know if we could reach out to the county and make them try to see if they can help us out.
I can, I can, I can reach out to the county and request that they deal with it. You know, in Middletown, we have different regulations in there, as you know, in Beer's Drive, in there, they're going to be milling. Wherever they install a gas main, we allow it to settle for the construction season, and then once the trench has settled completely and we're happy with it, they can come in. Orange and Rockland, they mill half the road from the curb to the center line of the road, and then repave it. But that's only a special arrangement the city has with Orange and Rockland. I don't think many other communities have them. I could be wrong, but that's what we have. But I'll be happy to reach out to Orange County DPW about this.
Thank you, Jacob. Aldman Witt?
Thank you, Commissioner. I just really quickly wanted to get back to the, to the leaf pickup, and it's probably a question we might all get. Once you, once you folks go through the fourth, first, second, and third wards, you're going to come back around again, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we always do.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? All right. Aldman Kleiner?
I just wanted to make that clear also, that you are picking them up by ward, just like with bulk pickups.
Yeah.
So, and I, and I think it's four feet out from the...
Four feet? Okay, not three?
Yeah. But as we know, the leaves don't wait for, for our schedule, so there, there are a lot of people put leaves out early, and I don't know what we can do about that. But it is by ward, and then after the last ward is picked up, then the following week, you go back through the whole city.
Yes. And I believe we have the ward organized in our brochure on the, if you see it on our website, where we're going to start from, because every year we rotate it, I believe. Don't quote me on that, I shouldn't have said that. Usually, we start in the second ward, because that's the most, most amount of...
We're the third week this time.
Yeah. Yeah. Don't quote me on that. So, but yes, but we do go by ward, finish it ward by ward, and then we go around one more time.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jacob. City Clerk?
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to start this evening by thanking Andy Mills and Fred Isicks. Yesterday, they took the mayor's youth council on a tour of Middletown's historic Hillside Cemetery. It was a great trip, and we also were sponsored by the Orange County Land Trust. They provided refreshment, so thank you to them. Early voting will begin on October 26th at the Mulberry Senior House. Anybody in Orange County can vote at the senior house from October 26th through November 2nd for early voting. You can check for the times on either the city website or the Orange County Board of Elections website. They vary each day. Also, just as a reminder, you still have until October, I'm sorry, October 26th to register to vote. You can register online through the Board of Elections website, or at the Board of Elections in Goshen. They have Saturday hours from now through November 2nd for voting and for registration purposes until the 26th. And finally, at the last council meeting, the council unanimously adopted a repeal of the winter street parking regulations. So our residents no longer will have to worry about moving their cars between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM during the winter months of December 1st through March 15th. In the coming weeks, you'll be getting a mailing from the city indicating how the new laws will work, and how you will be notified when your cars do need to be moved. While the restriction is lifted as a blanket restriction, there will be restrictions in times of snow, and you'll be issued, a snow alert will be issued, and residents will have to move their cars during the duration of the snow alert. You can find information about that on our website at MiddletownNY.gov, and we're looking forward to making sure everyone is notified about that. And lastly, on the agenda this evening, there is a resolution moving the November 5th meeting to November 4th in recognition of Election Day.
All right. Any question for the city clerk? Thank you. All right. Remarks of Aldman. Aldman Massey?
I would just like to congratulate and thank the Serpentine family. I've known most of them over the 75 years. You going to say anything, Mayor? I've enjoyed doing business with you over those years, and thank you very much.
Aldman Witt?
Thank you very much. I'd also like to congratulate the Serpentine family. That was quite a history lesson we received there today, and kind of reflecting back on, I remember those stores being, you know, having grown up here, and thank you so much for what you've done, and it was nice to have you come out here tonight. A couple of things, very quickly. I would encourage folks with the construction, tomorrow's a big day in the first ward in the Windsor-Wickham-Sproat Cottage North Street area, up by the firehouse. I would just, we, the district, geez. The city does a really good job advertising this and letting everybody know, like, the day before on Facebook. So like, the fact that there's going to be impacted tomorrow is already on the website today and available to be shared. So we've been very transparent about this entire thing since it started, and I would encourage folks to, to check out Facebook and, and as well as the website. And finally, I just want to acknowledge the Middletown youth football kids coming to the varsity game last Thursday. I'd have to guess, close to 100 kids.
139.
139. They had a chance to wear their uniforms and come out with the team, and came busting through the, the paper, and had a chance to play at halftime. So it was really nice to see so many families involved, and it seemed like the kids really enjoyed it. So future middies had a chance to maybe get on that field for the first time. So, thank you.
Aldman Green?
Yeah, thank you very much. Congratulations to the Serpentine family. Most of my experience in Serpentine was in the Galleria, but I'm pretty sure I spent so much time in there, I could draw the store from memory. Many, many lollipops, when I was little, I believe, I took off of that counter. So congratulations, we're glad you're here in Middletown, and 75 years is no, no short amount of time. So that's just such a great accomplishment. And our city clerk did mention Hillside Cemetery, and I just want to say that that is absolutely a gem, if you have not been there, and especially this time of year. It is one of the most beautiful places we have in the city. A lot of history in there. So take, take some time, if you haven't visited it before, and go experience it. Thank you.
Aldman Kleiner?
Thank you. I too want to congratulate Serpentine and thank them for their many years of being great businesses in Middletown. And Stevenson was going to be a great addition to the police department, and he's also going to help with the Middletown Warming Station when, when they have any issues or to, you know, help people that need that kind of guidance. So I've known him for many years from Middletown Cares, and he just, just is a great person. So we're very lucky to have him. Also, with the early voting, I want to remind people that from October 26th to November 4th, I think the dates are, but during that time that they're doing early voting at Mulberry House, all the regular activities at Mulberry House are canceled for those days. So it will only be for early voting. So there, there won't be, there won't be the usual activities. So people should be aware of that. The Warming Station, cold out tonight, tells us that it is going to be opening for the season on November 24th. They have a lot of volunteers, but they still can use more. And the training sessions will be at 7:00 PM at, at the Warming Station on Thursday, October 17th, and on Tuesday, October 22nd. And I'm going to defer to the Yankee game for anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Aldman Ray?
Good evening. My congratulations to the Serpentine family, and thank you for the chocolate. I love chocolate. As for youth football, having worked in the building today, and it is days after this event, all my little football players and cheerleaders wanted to talk about was how much fun they had being on that field. I said, good, I can't wait to watch play when you're actually in the big game. So I love when we partner our rec sports with our school sports and tie the older kids with the younger's. I think it just generates an excitement that's very, very valuable. As for leaves, I both love and hate this time of year. It means I don't have to mow my lawn anymore, but it also means that I'm going to catch all the leaves that blew down the street on my front lawn again. But please, 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 especially kids trying to get to bus stops safely as it rains on these leaves, to please try to maintain your pile. I know you can't control the weather once you put them in the road, but you can't control how far into the road they go, because they can absolutely be very hazardous. And for that final loop that our DPW does, they work very hard. I respectfully ask that residents do not say, you know what, I'm just going to put them all out on that last week, on Thursday. And I just think that we have a schedule, please refer to it, please try to stick to it. I understand more leaves will fall, but please don't leave that for the last minute. It puts a big strain on them. And that's all I have for me. Thank you.
Aldman Johnson?
Thank you. I'll join my colleagues in thanking you for your contribution to our community all these years. As far as East Main Street, when they did, for my property, when they did the sidewalk, I ended up with a significant dip at the end of the driveway. And when I called Walkill, they said, well, that's not our section, that's, that's Orange County. And I was not really successful in getting anybody to think about that. So my business in particular, we've had a lot of interesting visits today with people who can't get there from here, and, but that's progress. Thank you.
Aldman Jefferson Swann?
Yes, good evening. Congratulations to the Serpentine family. And when Maria passed the ball around, I got all excited. I said, well, they're in the jewelry business, so this must be a good ball. Find out it was chocolate, but thank you anyway. Stevenson is going to be a great addition to the Middletown family. He's a great role model, so I appreciate him by bringing, coming to us, the Middletown team. Thank you very much.
Aldman Tobin?
Just like to congratulate the Serpentine family on 75 years of business.
And I also would like to congratulate my friend, the Serpentine family, for the business.
And I also would like to congratulate my friend, the Serpatini family, for the business. I enjoy going in there in the afternoons and talking, we could spend hours talking about everything in Middletown, and trying to get my wife to wear the jewelry that I buy all the time, so, we're always in there, at least four or five times a year, so, congratulations, you're a great guy, and the business is great.
Did you say you buy?
Yeah, I do, I spend money there, spend, so, all right, new business.
Good evening, we have a resolution sponsored by Aldman Tobin, authorizing the acceptance of the Child passenger safety program grant of $3,429 from the New York State Department of Motor Vehicles.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Tobin, Aldman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Aldman Tobin, authorizing the acceptance of a $16,720 grant for the police traffic services from the New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Committee.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Tobin, second by Aldman Massie, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, authorizing a transfer of $30,000 from within the waste water, the water treatment plant budget for overtime.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, second by Aldman Johnson, any discussion?
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, authorizing an increase in the rate of pay for an employee.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, second by Aldman Massie, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Ray, authorizing a transfer of $15,000 for citywide mailing, announcing new winter parking regulations.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Ray, second by Aldman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt, authorizing a temporary borrowing from the general fund balance for capital projects.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt, second by Aldman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massie, authorizing a transfer of $30,000 from the general fund balance to cover the remaining cost of the M&amp;NJ Railroad Station on East Main Street.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massie, second by Aldman Green, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Jean-François, authorizing the dedication of portions of Magnolia Park Road and Anthony Street.
Resolution sponsored by Jean-François, second by Aldman Tobin, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, authorizing amendment to city code to create a new chapter 365, public property camping.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, second by Aldman Ray, any discussion? Aldman Kleiner?
Thank you. There's part, and I would have asked Alex if he'd been here tonight, but there's part of this resolution that towards the end says, an exemption is if no other, I believe it says housing, is available, then it doesn't apply, and I'm not sure how we, how we define that. I'm, I'm not sure what the...
Chief?
So, the other housing could be the warming center, it could be Honor, it could be housing through DSS, independent living, any other options for housing.